My name is Reeve Santos. I'm vice chair of the Met Council and I will be chairing the committee of the whole meeting in the absence of Chair Zeller. Today is August 20th, 2025. We will begin with a land acknowledgement and I will read the acknowledgement. The Met Council acknowledges that the land we currently call Minnesota, and specifically the seven county region, is the ancestral homeland of the Dakota Oyate who are present and active contributors to our thriving region. As part of Met Council's commitment to address the unresolved legacy of genocide, dispossession, and settler colonialism, and the fact that government institutions, including the Met Council, benefited economically, politically, and institutionally after the forceful removal of the Dakota Oyate, the Met Council is dedicated to instilling land, water, and people commitments in regional policy. These commitments support the Dakota Oyate, the eleven federally recognized tribes in Minnesota, Ho-Chunk Nation, and the American Indian communities representing over one hundred and fifty diverse delegations that call the seven county region. We have just one information item on the agenda, so without any changes, I will assume the agenda is good and approve the agenda. I will also ask for a motion to approve the August 6th, 2025 Metropolitan Council's Committee of the Whole Minutes.
So move.
It has been moved by council member over second. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been seconded by council member Ozma. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The minutes are approved. So next, we have Charles Carlsen to give us our transit funding allocation policy presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, council members. Happy to be here in front of you today with time to discuss the transit funding allocation policy. This is a policy that exists in draft form that was included in your agenda. We'll walk through the major components of that policy and its development in today's presentation. And then, beginning next week, the council will consider adopting the policy first at Transportation Committee on Monday, at Management Committee on Wednesday, and then it would become, it would come before the council for consideration on September 10. So with those action items coming up, we're taking tonight's meeting to go over the contents of the policy, answer any questions, and any discussion that the council would like to have on its contents. A major component of this policy relates to suburban transit providers, as shown here. In law, these are called replacement service municipalities. They're sometimes, they're often called suburban transit providers. That doesn't tell the full picture because Metro Transit serves seventy-five cities. Only two of those are Minneapolis and St. Paul, so there are seventy-three suburban cities that are in Metro Transit's suburban transit area, but we will say suburban transit providers with that clarification upfront as we go forward. The origin of this arrangement is really from the nineteen eighties. About forty years ago, the legislature gave permission, it was a temporary open window, that window closed in the mid-eighties, that cities could opt out of the MTC, or Metro Transit's predecessor agency. And at that time, notably, property taxes were the main source of transit funding in the region. So property taxes were collected around the region. There was a feeling from these communities that they were paying in property taxes and weren't seeing commensurate service in response. The legislature agreed, allowed a time period that cities could furnish their own service. Over time, the boundaries have changed a bit in terms of who, which communities associated together, but right now, two cities operate their own transit services, Maple Grove and Plymouth. The remaining ten cities are organized through joint powers agreements into two transit providers. Three cities comprise the Southwest Transit, and then seven cities comprise Minnesota Valley Transit. So these have, these transit providers have boards that are comprised of their members, so city members and county members that compose a board that oversees the actions of these, of these entities, though the council is the funder of these services, primarily through motor vehicle sales tax allocations that are set in law, other allocations that are set by council policy of motor vehicle sales tax, and then capital funds, including federal funds. Collectively, these twelve cities comprise a little less than twenty percent of the region's population. They receive about twelve and a half percent of the MVEST, or the motor vehicle sales tax, funding, and generate around four percent of the ridership in the region. So that, with that context, we'll go into some description and discussion of how funding arrangements work. But first, we'll remind you of an interim policy that really set the groundwork. The council adopted this in December. What this policy did was establish that the council will take a long-term look when we're making funding allocations, and set a twenty-five-year forecast period as the time period that we would consider for allocations. That would, in this case, twenty twenty-six through twenty fifty, which coincides with our long-range transportation plan, which is, which is great. The council would consider its role and its activities through annual budget adoption. So we wouldn't do a twenty-five-year forecast every year, but we do it to set allocations, and then every year, you, as the governing body of the council, would adopt budgets that set forth what we will do with transit funds in the, in the coming year. The policy also enacted a metro mobility statute revision that actually took place in twenty twenty-one to become effective in the middle of twenty twenty-five. What that statute does is puts the state on the responsible, financially responsible for metro mobility and metro move as programs, both for the operating cost and for the capital cost of the program outside of federal revenue. What it requires us to do in response is really to isolate money that that program generates in federal funding, and we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the federal funding section, but to dedicate funds that are generated by that program to that's program, to that program's purposes. So all of this took effect July 1. We are now a state forecast program. This is fantastic news for the region in terms of solidifying the financial future for this program and its implications in this policy.
Charles, Madam Chair, and just could I add, and at the legislature, per request this last session, and a piece passed statute, there was a, there's a review going on too, from a third-party review from Mindot, on how the forecasting gets done for the program as a part of this, like wanting to understand more about metro mobility now that it's become a state forecasted program. So next year at the legislature, there'll be a report on how all that forecasting comes together and what it looks like, and your team is working right now to provide the information for it.
The other thing the policy in December did was point at a business item passed in two thousand and one that adopted how we would allocate federal urbanized area funding. This, the policy you'll consider replaces that entirely, but before then, we didn't have any policy basis for that allocation besides the business item from twenty-five years ago. So at least we would, we pointed at it in the interim policy. And then finally, we set a twenty twenty-five allocation to suburban providers based on regional ridership of the sales and use tax, so that we would have funding distribution while the policy was further developed. The twenty twenty-five policy completes this work. It incorporates new state law, new forecasts, it applies the twenty-five-year projection that I mentioned in the previous slide, and it allocates to these suburban providers local funds, it allocates federal funds, it allocates transportation sales and use tax funds, or sales tax funds, and defines how we relate with them and with the federal transit administration. So it sets a new base for, for our relationship financially, as well as several other interactions that clarify and clean up current practices and bring, bring us into the next iteration of this program. We also will adopt some, or you'll consider some policy provisions related to that. In-state law act of transportation is an allowable use of these transit dollars, so we address that in the policy. We also recognize the need for clear roles and responsibilities in fare collection systems and would require that. We don't have the, we're very busy with a fare system upgrade, so in the next year is when work around those fare collection systems would occur in agreement with intent that those would be completed next year, so that we have really a clear understanding of whose role is what and how, how this works financially across our systems. So setting the groundwork for future agreements. This policy work began really after the sales tax was first passed into law in twenty twenty-three. The council set a interim allocation. This was issued as a lump sum of the forecasted amounts to be collected in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. So that was issued to providers in a, in a single dispersment in April of twenty twenty-four. Around that time, we also started some listening sessions about what are your intents with new funding, what, where do you want your system to grow, what type of allocation would be of interest to you as providers, and receive feedback on that, that we've incorporated. Last August, we shared the draft policy provisions, as well as how we would allocate federal funds and regional transit capital, and we'll go into more detail on each of these. Those provisions really haven't changed in the years since, so those, those have been set essentially in what's proposed as the draft policy for a year. A couple of things that we didn't know were the sales tax allocation at that time, completing the twenty-five-year forecast, awaiting for any significant changes from the twenty twenty-five legislature, and some time to, at the providers' request, to better understand what it would mean to change their federal relationship from a subrecipient to a direct recipient, which is a thing we'll talk more about in a moment. At their request, there was, boy, this, this is happening really quick. Is there more time to develop this? And we said, we'll allocate an interim amount of sales tax for twenty twenty-five while we all explore this in more detail together. And so we've continued to do that. In June, we had a meeting with the FDA and the providers, where they could ask questions and the FDA could give an overview of what it means to receive the funds directly, that we'll talk about in a bit, as well as time for the legislature to complete its work. First expected in May, then it's been delivered in June, a, a final budget and amounts that we could use to update this and develop this allocation. We've been in discussion for the last five or six weeks with providers around, around the proposed policy and the proposed level of funding. There's an exchange of letters in your packet for this meeting that shares each perspective. We'll talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation. We also did some public engagement on the federal side of this that we'll, we'll touch upon as well. So this has been the engagement so far. We'd be continuing to engage with providers as we're implementing this policy. There are a number of changes associated with it, and that work will take years to the, to finally execute into its full form, but we are committed to that ongoing coordination as the implementation continues. This slide shows how we work with capital funds in the region currently and what we're proposing in the future. So there's two main sources of capital funds shown here, regional transit capital. These are bonds that the council issues that are supported by a property levy, and then federal fifty, section fifty-three oh seven, these are urbanized area formula funds, about eighty million dollars a year that the council receives, and that the region receives and are allocated to our capital program. These two sources historically have been combined into a capital program, metro transit capital, and a pooled MTS capital program. That program has supported both metro mobility and other Met Council, our fixed route and other Transit Link and other, other capital projects that we pursue, and also the suburban provider fleet. So this all was coming from the same pool. The providers would receive either match funding or buses that, you know, there's about three hundred buses that the council owns that these providers operate. We continue to own those vehicles, we purchase and provide them, they operate and, and maintain those vehicles, and they're funded by this, what has been pooled funding with us. This is less predictable and consistent than providers want, especially after the pandemic. There's, there's a lot of, there's a mismatch between the number of buses we have and the service that is operated that varies provider by provider. It's difficult to estimate what that looks like into the future based on our, our current fleet plans, what sensible fleet plans could look like into the future. So it's, it's, you know, it's kind of a cloudy area in terms of what the immediate next steps would be under the current model. A big thing that's happened, as I mentioned, metro mobility, the funds that that program generates are now dedicated to metro mobility. So there's about sixteen million dollars less flowing into the pool each year because it's dedicated to metro mobility. Over the last many years, metro mobility has not used that amount of federal each year, but costs that have increased for metro mobility buses actually require it use, you know, something very close to that in combination with other sources from the state in order to keep the program whole. And so there's just less money in the pool than there was. The council has provided matching funds through this pooled capital program. Providers are responsible for operating match, but have not typically been responsible for capital match. What this creates is the risk of incentive that if there's no provider skin in the game, is each grant that's applied for, you know, really the, the top priority of each agency, we're not sure, but it is a risk that we've, that we've observed in our current model. When federal funds do go to these providers, so far, they go as subrecipient grants. The council continues to bear any compliance risk associated with subrecipient grants. We are accountable to the federal government for any actions or mismanagement that other providers may incur. This isn't a problem that we've observed, but it is a risk for the council that merits consideration, especially when we think about increasing the amount of federal funds to these agencies, how the council also manages its risk, and what options we have available to us to do so. So in the new model, we're, we're seeking to address these challenges. We, under this model, through federal formulas and through local levy totals, would be allocating funds more directly to these providers. It'd be an increased contribution rather than coming through a pool. Providers would then have greater levels of funding and autonomy over that funding to implement and manage their system, to replace their vehicles, to maintain facilities in a, in a state of good repair. It is a more predictable funding stream because it's annual total, that's, that's easier to predict than based on a fleet plan, and it's based on federal unit values that we'll talk about in a minute. The intent is that this is a reliable and predictable source that they can use to advance their board's priorities for their transit systems in their parts of the region. We also, through this, would provide funds as direct grants from the federal government to these providers that would make them wholly responsible for federal compliance and would release the council of that risk from a compliance perspective, so that would be, that would be good. In terms of the amounts of funding, metro mobility would have about sixteen million dollars isolated to itself, no longer going into the pool. That is, that accounts for most of the reduction in federal funds from the rest of the council capital program, you know, so still in the council, but isolated to metro mobility. Suburban providers would be seeing about a four and a half percent increase, or roughly a doubling of their federal share by using the full federal formula, and then thirteen million dollars of local funds that we'll, that we'll discuss in the next slide that is related to our property levy. What the council gets in exchange for this increased funding allocation is that we would no longer be purchasing or matching equipment that these, that these providers use. So that's, that's why we're seeing a reduction, they're seeing an increase. It's offset by less scope that the council's responsible for. Major source of this thirteen million relates to the transit capital debt service levy. So you talked about this at the council meeting last week a bit, as you're going through the twenty twenty-five budget. This levy supports regional transit capital bonds that are paid by, by this levy. It's about fifty-five million per year, both in funding and in levy, that happens across all of the communities shown in purple on this map. So this is the transit levy district. Metro mobility, it's notable here because the shift from metro mobility, formerly reliant on this property tax funding and the bonds associated with it for its capital program, the match for that has really shifted to the state now. What, what that change allows is that there aren't several programs reliant on this capital levy in these twelve suburban communities that are replacement service providers. What it means is that the council could, for the first time, consider allocating these funds to these communities at the level that the debt is issued, that we levy in them. So if we levy a million dollars in Egan, the notion is that we'd provide a million dollars to MBTA for transit purposes because a portion of that is no longer needed for metro mobility. We would not issue RTC itself for bond reasons, for credit rating reasons, for many reasons, we would issue other funds. So we would want to own both the debt and the asset, so our practice now is not to issue RTC itself, but to issue an equivalent funding source, probably from the council's share of sales tax funds or motor vehicle sales tax. What we would do in the proposed policy is allocate these funds based on the amount that we levy, but we would only do this in years that the council's authorized to issue regional transit capital. So if we're not given permission by the legislature to raise this money, then we wouldn't issue it to the providers because we wouldn't have it in our program either.
Charles, could you just say a couple, like, this is one of those things that flies under the radar, and every two years in the legislature, we get to have long conversations about, could you just say about the, like, how it kind of works to get the RTC authority?
Absolutely. So every, we need legislative authority to issue these bonds. We don't need authority to issue the debt, but, or to levy, the, to levy, to surface the debt, but it becomes self-living if we don't, if we don't receive the authority. So every two years, we need to get permission from the legislature to continue this program. It gradually increases over time at a low level, but generally, it's around fifty-five million. We need that permission from the legislature. It's typically done through the omnibus transportation bill every two years, but it's not a guarantee.
And I'll just add, and it's one of those things that, like, a legislator will help you with it, and then they kind of forget for two years why it exists, and it's very confusing even to those always close to it. And so Judd spends a lot of time making friends with a couple of people in both the House and the Senate, and in the administration, to make sure they understand the importance of these bonds, and also, there's not a significant tax interaction with the general fund, which is a really important part of this dynamic when you're in a, in a deficit year. And so, in, in an effort to keep our water level high enough on RTC bonds, this could just a pause on it for a second.
In, in the, in the authorization for twenty twenty-five, one of the concerns of the legislature is that there is a property tax and income tax refund interaction that occurs from this levy. So somebody could pay their property tax and then qualify for a rebate. That rebate comes from the state general fund. The legend, you know, having, allowing this would, could potentially then contribute to the state deficit that they were seeking to resolve last year. What the legislature did in authorizing this was require that we pay for that, that general fund interaction from the sales tax funds. So we're figuring out how much that is. It's not a lot of money, but it's perhaps hundreds of thousands, or maybe up to a million dollars over the two-year period that would be going instead into the state general fund. If we have to pay that, we wouldn't, we would, we would proportionately reduce the amount of funding that is going to the suburban providers just to account for that difference. So there'd be a small offset to this thirteen million, but it's the kind of stuff that we'll be figuring out behind the scenes in a procedure. So that's, so that's just one thing I wanted to share because it is, it does become one of those time-consuming conversations that Judd is an expert at.
It's always good to have more information than not enough, so we appreciate all the detail.
Sure thing, sure thing. We don't have all the detail on every factor of the federal fifty-three oh seven and fifty-three forty urbanized area funding allocation. It's, 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 this is an even deeper topic, but the, the point here is that what we're proposing to do is to allocate funds based on all of the factors that are in federal formula, as though the suburban providers were their own urbanized region. Right now, the way it works, that two thousand and one business item I, I mentioned, back then, Metro Transit was the only entity that reported to the federal government, and we only received earnings from, from the feds based on Metro Transit's reporting. In two thousand and one, the, the arrangement was, if you begin reporting, suburban providers, the region will earn more money, and we will give you that additive money for your program. So we did that. There's been other changes over time. Now it's typically given as non-federal funds. A expiration provision was removed when, when it was no longer federal funds, but before, it was only an additive, not a whole amount that was given because their program, their capital program was managed in part from the council's pool.
Council member Barbara?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and taking that money and defederalizing it and distributing it out to suburban providers, again, means we're responsible for the reporting on it, but then they can have more flexibility.
Yep. Yeah, so what we're proposing to do is that we would use all of those federal formula factors, so population, low-income population, population density, all have federal formula values associated with them. There are service incentives, there are There are service incentives, there are growing states' formula dollars. In addition to, the main source of funding is based on service miles operated in for different modes in the region. So they would receive all of those funds as though they were their own region because they would then be responsible for the full capital program. The University of Minnesota is also a transit provider in the region. It also receives federal formula funds, and we'd see a small increase. They're inside of Metro Transit service area, so they wouldn't receive the demographic and and other some of those funds, but would receive all the incentives that they don't currently receive that relate to the service that they operate in the region. So that that would go to the U of M, and the council would receive the remaining funds and other sections of funding for state of good repair, for bus facilities that are different amounts or really come only to the council. So this new allocation approach would discontinue our current sort of mixed pooled or additive approach, and the policy also stipulates that suburban providers would become direct recipients of these funds, except when the council provides transit services. So of these of these 12 cities, and there's four providers, Maple Grove and Plymouth have no interest to become a direct recipient. And so since May, we've, or beginning in May, we've begun a little more detailed conversation about what it means to be their service provider. In effect, the council will be would be responsible for delivering their service through intergovernmental agreement. This is one of the implementation steps we'd be doing over the next two years. Metro Transit is Maple Grove's service provider now, so maybe we if we give Maple Grove money and buses, they hire Metro Transit, give them those buses, pay them the money to operate their services. It could look like that with Plymouth. There might be a simpler way we could do all of this that we'll be exploring with those cities. But what that would allow is that they wouldn't need to meet all those requirements of being a direct recipient. They would still be directing the transit service in their communities and the capital investments that they want to make with the funding that the council is allocating to them, but we can clean it up and not have a complex process over a small amount of federal funds.
Charles, did that come out of the engagement after the new sales taxes allocation?
It did, it did. So beginning in the beginning in the early 2024 discussion and then kind of solidified through the, and here's what we're proposing, and okay, what would that mean for us? And both through the group conversations as well as individual meetings that we had going out to Plymouth, meeting with Maple Grove of how this could look, has been beneficial to mutual understanding of what the new arrangement would look like. Still a long way ahead in terms of where that might go. The policy also allows for a transition period that we would be able to manage an orderly transition over time rather than a January 1 cutoff. So, you know, both for those service arrangements with those two cities, but also for the path to direct recipientship for the other two providers, Southwest and MBTA, the policy allows for an orderly transition, in part because of some of the unknowns about FTA and their staffing capacity to manage their end of of this change. So we want to provide that flexibility both to providers, but even more importantly, to our federal partners in this in this change. So we received input from from the providers on this on this process, continuing to discuss it. We had a meeting with FTA and the providers where we could all talk about it together. There is concern that the amount of funding does not does not reach the level that might have otherwise come from the pooled funding, and it's true, a portion of of those funds are, now that now that they're isolated to Metro Mobility, they're not available to these providers. The sales tax factors into how the difference is addressed. And also the timing, we talked about the timing. It could, this could take a while to get fully in effect. We also did a public engagement process around this as required by law, and we received 26 responses. There are varied perspectives on this. 10 agreed, 10 responses agreed with our approach. Most of those that did not agree thought it was too much money to the suburban providers. We also received input from suburban provider board members and staff that they weren't sure, and this is just one piece of the puzzle, is how I would summarize the public input. The last piece of this is the sales and use tax allocation. Well, we'll spend a little more time in a couple slides of on this topic. What we do, what we recommend in the allocation basis, and we'll show this graphically on the next slide, is that we account for funds that were replaced in 2023 with the passage of the sales tax. By accounting for those, we could then allocate the remaining funds, and it's about 25% that remains that weren't coming to us from other sources in in the past or expected into the into the future. 25% would be allocated between the council and suburban providers on a simple allocation basis. And the three basis options that we developed and shared with Transportation Committee and TAB last month, as well as with the providers on July 14, were population, motor vehicle sales tax, and ridership. So population, about 20% of the region's population lives in these areas, 20% of 25% is about four and a half percent, slightly less numbers than on each of those, yet to get that four and a half percent. Motor vehicle sales tax would be 3%, ridership would be a little bit less than 1%. Our proposed allocation basis is to divide the funds on population. This does result in an increased investment in these communities. It does provide for a geographic distribution of the funding across the region on a person-for-person basis that really no other funds directly do, and it's simple to calculate, and we can update this periodically relatively easily when we have new data from the census or other sources. So that's the basis that we're recommending. And then there's a couple of policy provisions attached to it. One is that these cities can use this for active transportation. It's allowed by the law in the transit section. They could opt, it's it's transit funding, but a city could opt to use these funds for active transportation. Two cities, Maple Grove and Plymouth, already are. We feel that it would have to be opened up to all 12 if they wanted to do that, so in the procedure, we would be developing the process that that would that that could happen. The balance would go to the private provider for transit purposes only. So that's that's one aspect of the policy. We'd also be requiring fair collection system agreements by 2027. This allows us to complete important work in the coming year to implement a fair collection system upgrade, to consider some fair policy revisions. But this is about whose job is what with respect to replacing a farebox, buying a farebox, paying for the farebox, as opposed to sweeping control over over provisions of how providers do fair collection or things like that. It's really to document what roles and responsibilities are and how we partner in executing fair collection. And then finally, the the property levy equivalent that we discussed for before, that's that's addressed in the sales tax component of the policy itself. So that's how we pick it up in the policy language. When we put all of these funding sources together collectively under this proposed approach, it is for in terms of next year's funding estimates, just under $97 million. For comparison, in-state law, the required funding to these providers is only a portion of the motor vehicle sales tax. The first first column of numbers there is about about $45 million, up that $54 million is what's required by law. So this is a bit better than double of what the law requires in terms of financial assistance to these providers that we recommend through a proposed policy, and $20 million of that would be from sales tax funds. This diagram, and this has been called a windsock in some of our council member conversations.
I'll just point out, there was a pool coming into tonight on whether you would refer to as windsock. So I'm just ready to be watching right now, and I have a feeling those people might be. We'll be settling up on that later. I was hoping you weren't going to use it, Si, so.
However, the this diagram shows the percentages of of the entire sales tax that are allocated to these different things, and left is what's in law and right is the result of our 25-year look. So this is a 25-year analysis of about $21 some billion of forecast sales tax projections. In law, 83% of that comes to the council, 17% goes to the counties, or about about $3.5 billion of that total to the counties. Of the council share, it's divided between transit at 95% and active transportation uses defined by the Transportation Advisory Board, 5% of the funds within the transit share is where we get to, you know, how we how we should allocate these funds. Coming into the into the legislative session in 2023, the council was again facing a structural transit operating deficit. The legislature had addressed that with one-time, non-base funding, year after year after year. That was temporarily replaced by federal COVID funds. Those funds were being exhausted and were, the council was forecasting, you know, the return of that deficit that the state had funded on a one-time basis. The state legislature resolved that by passing the sales tax. So a major source of a major use of the sales tax intended by the state is to resolve the council's transit operating deficit that we bore ourselves through those annual funding allocations from the legislature. The 2023 law also specifically addressed use of sales tax for transit ways. It requires the council pay all remaining operating costs for bus ways and guideways, so BRT and light rail and or all rail, from the state from the sales tax itself. So all remaining costs after federal and and state contributions. What that had the effect of doing was, well, one, it it took out of law a provision that required the state to pay for 50% of rail operating costs. So that went away, that was replaced by the sales tax. The other thing it did is that it took away what had been a practice of counties being responsible for 50, or in the case of Southwest, LRT, 100% of operating costs for transit ways. So that that removed the counties from the operating game entirely. That is $4.5 billion that the sales tax is directed to fill by the state in-state law. Associated with that is the TRIP program, and you heard updates on that at your last at your last meeting, really an extension of transit operating costs that we've captured by putting against this this program as directed by law. So when we put all of the all of these sources together, these are funds that would have come only to the council for these purposes. We think for that reason, it does not make sense to include them in the allocated funds amongst providers because they're directed by law or really just to the council, and that comprises 75% of the money. 25% remains, and that's what we're proposing would follow a population-based allocation. The council would receive about 20% of that, and the providers, 4.5%. So that's really the basis of why it's, why, you know, why it becomes 4.5% under a population-based allocation, because we need to account for the funds that came to us from other sources. If we don't account for those, it would have the effect of cutting only the council and providing those funds to the other providers instead, which which doesn't make sense because that's not what the law did, it's certainly not what the legislature set forth to do in 2023. We received feedback on the on the proposal. Letter is included that we received from the Suburban Transit Association, which are those those four providers together in association. We received that in late July with feedback. The STA requested not 4.55, but 12.35% of the funds. They proposed a hybrid allocation that would be a mix of population, tax base, and ridership. We don't know the elements of each of those, but we know what their percentage per provider that they proposed would be. And they'd like these funds to be able to maintain and grow their fleet and the and the services in these cities. Our response to that is that we're not going to recommend that the council adopt that measure or that level. It would result in similar amounts of funding to the council, which is 80% of the population as to these providers, which are 20% of the population, you know, if we account for the replaced funds. What that would mean is that the council could not invest in its suburban cities for services like microtransit launched on Saturday in Bloomington, coming next month in Blaine, plans for other cities for similar investment, as well as required investments like rail capital maintenance that are on the horizon and and growing. So in in my response to the suburban provider letter that I received, I shared that we would be going forward with 4.5% as the recommendation, which was the highest of the three options that we developed, but not at the level because it would not result in a in an equitable distribution across. And just to just to illustrate that point, and then we'll come back to the slide, under the proposed allocation, it would be around 10% of the sales tax to the council and 10 for bus services and 10% to the suburban providers, and it's just not a, it doesn't allow for an equitable distribution to especially to suburban areas in in the council's area. So that that was our our response to the providers. The other thing that the provider letter took issue with is a assertion that Metro Transit is expanding, and Metro Transit is expanding its service, and you've seen NetworkNow and the the service connected with that. What it didn't have was the context around current levels of service and what that looks like. So in the right on this slide is a graph that shows in blue where Metro Transit service levels are. So in comparison to 2019, based on revenue hours reported to the National Transit Database, Metro Transit in 2024 was at 77%. The suburban providers collectively were at 115% of pre-COVID service levels. So what looks like an expansion of Metro Transit service is largely a restoration of service levels, just in a new configuration to be responsive to current market demands and service needs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's really important to know that we took very definitive actions on some of these things in NetworkNow process, where we looked at our system and decided, you know, things that maybe we had suspended during COVID or were not being successful even in the current moment, that we scaled those things back so we could expand into the things that were working, and that's what you see reflected here. And I think it's really important that, you know, it's part of, operating when we do get funding like this is being smart with how we use those dollars, and this is how we're being smart with using those dollars.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, and then Regional Administrator, that can you can you speak to the difference, the increase in revenue service hours for the suburban providers between 2024 and 2025 in terms of their increased level of service and expansion?
Yep, Madam Chair, council members. I don't know every details of of the full amount, but I think the big differences are expansion of microtransit service and expansion of fixed route service between the Southwest service area and the airport area that actually replaced the microtransit, but I think those account for the the increases shown over 2024. But each of these, you know, they've they've been able to invest in their system. That's that's certainly what the legislature has intended in this, but they've been able to realize those improvements and will consider how to how to continue advancing in relation to all the sources that we are providing to them to manage their services.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one other point that's not mapped on here, but is important because we're often talking about ridership and where are, what are we seeing as investments come back? And Charles reminded me this morning, and I think it's important as we talk about NetworkNow, I often anchor my head to where we'll be in 2027 and forget about where we are in 2025. We're at 60% of pre-pandemic ridership, but we're still only at 80% of the service that we had pre-pandemic, which actually feels a lot different than if we were at 100% of the service provided and at 60% of the ridership. And I do think that's an area of focus in our conversation with the media on these pieces when there's conversation on is transit coming back. There is still a gap from where we were pre to post right now as we're living in this post-pandemic world, but it's not a 40% difference, it's a 20% difference, and that's sizable. And I say that while also pointing out that as the service levels have gone above 100% with the suburban transit providers, they are seeing lower ridership numbers post-COVID than Metro Transit at the 60% level. And so we're seeing 60% and 80%, they're somewhere less than 60%. And so we're seeing 60% at 80%, there's somewhere less than 60% at 125% of service to give you a sense of just kind of how we're seeing the transit markets develop post COVID.
Yeah, and within that really difference, Madam Chair, between between service types as well. There's been growth in microtransit ridership decreases from pre pandemic and local or express service. So really a variation and that's what we're seeing. The other element of the feedback that we've received, the University of Minnesota through conversation last December and in in July, the university would like to receive a portion of these sales tax funds to support their transit operations. The U of M is is not included in the proposed policy. The council is the funder of the suburban service providers. We are not the funder of the U of M outside of federal revenues that are that are based on their service, on their earnings. So for that reason, we do not recommend this, that you has pursued something legislatively that would that could address this. But it's, you know, the the simple answer to their request is that we are not their funder. And for that reason, they are not included in the sales tax allocation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will also note that suburban transit providers often provide transit services to the U. So like there's also, you know, so there there is still a connection to the university, just a different model.
Thank you. Councilmember Asma, did you have?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to know, the the U of M getting funded from the Fed directly or through the Met Council?
Yeah, Madam Chair, council member. The federal funds that the university receives, so nominally $800,000 a year or so, they are a sub recipient of the council for those funds. Their operating funds and the balance of their capital program, it comes from university sources. So I don't know the exact breakout, but I believe at least a port a significant portion comes from parking revenue, for example, and other other sources that the university controls. Thank you. When we put these pieces together for suburban providers over the next 25 years, under the current policy, we would expect, you know, with pooled capital and our our former way of of doing things, to issue about 3.38 billion over 25 years to these providers with the proposed policy where it would it would allocate 3.75 billion as our estimate, including about 800 million in sales tax funds. Their request would be over 5 billion from all sources, and that would include 2.1 billion from the sales tax. So compared to current policy, our proposal allows for growth. It's 111% of forecasted funds. Their request would be at 149%. We think this would not result in equitable investment in the council service area. But the proposed policy does allow for increased investment, at least per our forecasted amounts. So our next steps, we'll continue discussion tonight and certainly next, any any questions the council has on the on the draft policy. We would then present this for consideration at Transportation Committee on Monday, at Management Committee on Wednesday, and then as a joint report to the Met Council on the 10th of September. What this would allow us to do is adopt 2026 budgets and develop those budgets based on this new allocation. It allows us to make those any collections beginning in in January of 2026 effective. So we can we can issue funds at this revised amount. And then to allocate the new federal funds based on the any federal 2026 apportionments, which in theory could happen as soon as October 1st, more likely would be sometime in the first quarter of 2026. So we have a lot of work ahead of us even after a policy is adopted, developing procedures for how we allocate these funds and the specifics of, you know, when do we know how much we levy in those communities and how would we allocate those funds that we're yet to develop after policy adoption. Fair collection system agreements, as I mentioned before, and then the details of the federal funding process. The council would be asked to approve what's called a split letter that that says how much formula funding a provider would receive directly from the FTA. We'd also be looking to transfer ownership of existing fleet that is used by these providers. And that would be a council action to transfer the fleet in the future, as well as entering into service agreements with these providers for delivery of their services in partnership with the council. So many, many steps yet ahead, but really the big milestone that initiates that work is adoption of the policy as proposed next week. With that, Madam Chair, I would be happy to revisit any topics in this very dense presentation or any other questions the council may have.
Thanks, Madam Chair. One one point and then a couple like prompts maybe for council member Barbara or you, Charles, just to clarify on points. And I will just speak on behalf of Metro Transit, who've been working closely with Metropolitan Transportation Services throughout this, that following adoption of a policy here, we will be working to come back as quickly as possible to the council with a predictable understanding of what the allocation looks like for Metro Transit going forward to talk about what that means for the system here prior to getting into next year and next legislative session. One of the biggest complaints that often comes up is tell us your vision, tell us exactly what you can do, tell us what you can't do. And I think that's a fair critique. And part of the answer to that is, well, we live in an uncertain environment where until we clarify what dollars we have to count, it's impossible to be able to fully project, and you can make odd promises. And so we've already been working on the framework for what it'll look like. And the council taking action enables us to be able to do that final planning work to come before you and lay out a broader implementation plan for what can be funded, where do we remain short in our long term. Two quick prompts, maybe. Charles, I didn't see these listed as the back and forth with the providers, but I believe they've come up, so I was hoping you could maybe address it. One was a question around process and please slow down by another year, I know has come up along the way. I don't know what you want to add to that, but I would just say a year ago, we were also getting pressed on process to please move faster and make a decision. And so do you want to say anything to process and I mean, you walked through it a little bit. I just want to give voice to this from their perspective.
Sure thing, yeah, Madam Chair and council members. In in the letter, they did request a delay until mid October of 2025 in order to provide more time. Separately, we've also been criticized for what's taking so long, why don't you get this place? We need the certainty so that we can plan our budgets. I think all providers need certainty to plan their budgets. I think we see a difference that's unlikely to be resolved in terms of really what comes down to how much. And so moving ahead with certainty is what we are recommending the council do so that, in part, so we can develop our budget, develop what what we may do as a transit provider with the council's share of those resources and provide certainty to them so they can advance their 2026 budgets.
I'd say I'd agree with that. And I think that, you know, when we first started, it was, can we hold off a little longer? We want to learn that was fair. I think we all had a lot of questions that still needed to be answered. And we've been really active in interacting with them throughout this whole last year. And it's been a lot of meetings, a lot of conversations. And I think that really, even when we advance, you know, the the initial chunks of money, if we did it at this sort of time of year because we wanted to provide them certainty of what they could plan for, and that gave us some certainty. Now we've got this broader model of everything of of, you know, because we do get asked, where is the where is the money going? Now we have a good understanding where all the money's going. And now we can make some concrete decisions. And so I think delaying it just leads to more potential push and pull and and probably won't be very effective.
And then the final prompt, Madam Chair, is and so in the conversation that come up and the uncertainty that change presents, I mean, we it's been a long time since there have been any relational changes here to how the funding works and the governance. And this is something that stood out, I'll just candidly say, when I started to meet and work with Charles and with the Transportation Committee, just the the lack of consistent government governance across transit agencies in our region and how the risk is disproportionately borne by the council for operations that exist beyond that is just something that we should always be leaning into and thinking about as we go forward with opportunities. And I appreciate you brought that up. I could you say anything to, on the capital side specifically? This has been a concern raised throughout the process from providers about, but how are we going to afford? I don't want to misstate it, but something to the effect of how will we afford our capital needs going forward? And what this does if we don't get the larger funding share proposed? And I know you've been thoughtful about this, but I'm just kind of curious, like, how have you been talking with them about that process in case council members hear about that in the run up to this coming before the money?
Yeah, Madam Chair, council members, you know, really this, the current policy shown here, this is based on our capital improvement plan going into the future that, you know, if we were under the under the current model, this is the amount that we would be contributing, including for bus replacement and things like that over the next 25 years. Really, it's based on our current six year CIP and then averages of that in the out years. The I mean, the proposed is an increase. We've heard concerns that they need 12 and a half percent to to keep whole. We don't have further data that that supports the that details the assumptions around that. We think that the 4.55% keeps whole and then and, you know, a good amount more, which is why it's part of the supportive basis. The other two options, ridership around 1% would would likely result in a cut and best, you know, perhaps about what we might have what we might have invested. The caveat on all of this is that that assumes we take the current system as a static object in perpetuity. And that's not really what we're seeing. And we have spare ratios that are across the board in terms of, you know, some are close to the maximum 20% that's allowed. One provider is almost 300% because of the magnitude of changes. It's because they've made responsible decisions in the fund in the service that they're operating that results in a spare ratio like that. The challenge for the council is what does that mean in terms of our capital program moving forward? Would we, you know, we would have to make tough decisions that affect them in order to reach compliance. Instead, what we're saying is let them make those decisions for themselves. Take away the incentive to run bad service in order to get a bus replaced. Instead, you know, have have a fair amount of funding and be accountable and responsible for those capital investment decisions for your own system. That's what this proposed policy offers.
A good example of that is we had a good conversation today at TAB about microtransit and how microtransit is different in these different regions. When we look at where Metro Transit is putting microtransit, we're connecting to the high frequency lines. That's not the same need in some of the other areas because they don't have the same kind of high frequency. So where for many years, these agencies wanted big buses, coach buses, things like that, that were running meter services into the cities from there. Now they want smaller, more agile vehicles and things like that that you can use for microtransit. It is really kind of the right way to go, but there are long conversations because as Charles talked about, we own the fleet. And so we have to work those things out over the next couple of years, really, like how is that going to actually work?
Thank you. Any other questions, council member Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know in the past, there's been tension up over how long do you keep a bus and and those sorts of things. And there's also been tension of actually sharing their ridership data with the council. With this policy, does that kind of take us out of that seat so that there's not that tension anymore?
Madam Chair, council member, I believe it does. I mean, it really allows providers to make those decisions on their on their fleet. You know, we have some older buses, but they've also been used very little for for several years. So we have very low mileage buses that exist in in some cases. Ridership data and other other data, the council does collect and require, some of which is specified by state law, and that continues. We have a high subsidy bus route analysis that that the legislature is requiring us to complete that includes those providers. It's related to an annual data set that we collect and publish. Most recently published is 2023, but we've received the 2024 data now. And then that would be a jumping off point for this high subsidy bus route study that legislature is, ma'am.
Thank you. I have that same question to you, and I thank you.
Make sure there's no other questions. All right, if you have questions, please reach out to any of us. I just want to, this is boiled down to 15 slides. This is an incredible amount of work, the amount of effort that has gone into this, both really spearheaded by Charles, but and with a lot of help from MTS finance staff, council finance staff, Metro Transit. This has been, and the number of meetings, like we've been in, I we joked before that I think I could give the presentation, which I probably could by now. But it's because, you know, to take these things, these models that are super complicated and then boil it down in a way that so to Ryan's point that when the legislator asks us, what are you doing with the money? We can show him the windside graph and, you know, say, here's where it's all going. And but it's very simple and it's relatable. And it's just, you know, just very impressed and thank you for having me.
Thanks, Deb. For some of us, it's very simple, for others, it might be a little complex. But the the leadership has gone through these numbers. And not not only that, but we've done a lot of engagement with our partners regarding the allocation. And all of this has been done in state statute guidelines. It's going to provide more predictable the sales tax money and sustainable funding and allow our service providers more direct authority over over the rest of their service. So are there any other questions on this or thoughts?
I I want to add just one comment from the Metro Transit perspective, who's not been the focus of the conversation today, but they are the region's largest transit provider and they've been at the table the whole way. And they are the ones who, the more you go above a pop, the the higher you go above the current ridership shares into other types of categories, the less proportionally they see as a return in this conversation. And they they've given constructive feedback the whole way. And just like we talked about capital choices needing to be made in this allocation formula, they will be forced to make choices as well. And many of you have been here during years of great deficits where there's been huge concerns around how we're going to operate. We believe we can operate on a strong plan going forward. And Metro Transit's been helpful in this entire process. But there is a tension on the other side to the conversation as well that we didn't focus on today intentionally. That wasn't the focus. But when we look at the bulk of transit riders in the region and where they're riding to and from and who's providing that service, that's the other side that was kind of like considered in all of this that's not really showing up the same way. And in all of the careful balancing act that Charles has been trying to work us through, I I wanted to appreciate that perspective as well.
For sure, there's a lot that goes into the forecasting. So with that, we have our next steps and the process for implementation. And we'll be looking forward to adopting this policy in the future. Looks like we have a Met Council vote on September 10. And if there isn't anything else, that is everything that is on our agenda, do you have anything else? Okay, so with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, Charles.